Good evening. I'd like to call to order our September School Board meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. The first thing we need to do is we're gonna patch in Kathy Carter via the phone, and so we have to actually vote on that, if correct?
Yes, your vote.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we allow Kathy Carter to meet with us via phone this evening.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Ms. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Kathy, I need you to vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. This time, we're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Williamson and our invocation by Dr. Tally. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Before we pray, I want to have just a moment of silence for a special young lady, staff member that passed this week, Sheila Brawnett, who was just kind to everyone. She's just wonderful and box tail. And just so kind to everyone and the love that she displayed when you came to Cliveview, when you came in her domain, you always felt special. And I always got in trouble because word didn't get out that that is where I hung out and ate and spent a lot of time, but she was just so warm and loving that you just couldn't help but be at home with her. Everyone felt special and just such a motherly spirit. And gonna miss her and she was just a blessing. As someone who does not have a mother who still lives, she was just a blessing because she treated you like one of her babies. And I'm never gonna ever forget her and we'll never forget her. So, we could just have a moment of silence for her before we pray. Sheila, thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for giving us the ability to assemble again. Thank you for New Year, Day of New Beginnings for our young people. Thank you, God, for how you've kept us on summer and how you brought us together, not with our challenges, but you're good. And we thank you because you're always good. And as we come into the New Year, God, we just pray that you would continue to open doors. We just thank you for our teachers who've come back with such enthusiasm and vigor. We thank you for those that are working with our young people to give them the best education they can. God bless our community, bless our city council, bless our parents and our students, those especially who entered college for the first time this year. And continue to bless our seniors as they advance on to armed forces or higher education or whatever that calling may be. And we just thank you, God, for everything you've done. Now, God bless this meeting, that all decisions should be done for the betterment of our young people and our community and our wonderful families. Strengthen us now and continue to strengthen this board that we do the best we can to make this the best community to live in and to grow in. For these blessings, we ask you to pray and thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Hi. Ms. Smith, do we have the registered speakers?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to community focus. This evening, I believe, we have the Martinsville Athletic Booster Club.
So, hi. I am Ashonda Brown. I am the Martinsville High School Athletics Booster Club President.
And I'm Stephanie Howard. I'm the secretary.
Alright, so today, we're just here to give you an insight of what's going on with the Martinsville High School Athletics Booster Club. As you may know or may not know, we basically have to rebuild the athletics club from ground up. So, we've been doing a lot of background and paperwork and things like that. So, today, we're just gonna give you an insight of what we have going on. It's gonna include an overview of our mission, fund usage, accomplishments, future goals, the importance of the Booster Club, and how can the community get involved. So, we're gonna start off with our mission. So, like I said, the Martinsville High School Booster Club is a now 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization made up of a group of volunteers. Our volunteers are dedicated to supporting and enhancing the student athlete experience by providing financial support, resources, and also encouraging students athletic programs. Our mission is to promote school spirit, encourage community involvement, and ensure that every athlete gets to see both on and off the field. So, what we've achieved together so far, again, this is within the past year, including this school year as well. We've purchased casual wear, including khakis, dress shirts, and ties for our boys' basketball team. We also purchased from a local small business, brand new warmups for our wrestling team. And we also purchased team sweatshirts for our cheerleaders. And this is all just so the teams can look unified and look like a team when they're going out places as well. We also supplied all of our student athletes with senior gifts during their senior nights. I'm not sure if you guys seen, different presents included the life-size portraits of their athletic picture. We did gift baskets as well as customized sweatshirts. So, those all was given to seniors, all seniors that were student athletes. We also supported students in the high school CTE class and purchased a book order of customized t-shirts and sweatshirts. So, those t-shirts and sweatshirts that you actually see in that picture on the left-hand side were created by students in the CTE class at the high school. And we actually sell those during games as well as events as well. And we also hosted a powder puff game to encourage team spirit and build morale within the school. So, and there's also a picture of the senior class that won last year. Again, that's something that we just hosted, just to kind of build the morale within the school. I've had a few girls come to me and ask like, "Are we doing that again?" So, hopefully, we're able to continue that as well because the students did look forward to that. And also, some of the community did come out as well. And we also created opportunities for students to earn their volunteer hours through Booster Club sponsored activities. So, as you guys know, one of the requirements for to graduate is, I think it was 40 hours of community service. So, students are able to get their community hours through the Booster's organization by helping or volunteering at some of the events, like the concession stands and things like that. So, our vision moving forward is to enhance our fundraising efforts. And I'll have Stephanie kind of give you an overview after I do an overview of this particular slot here. So, enhance our fundraising efforts that's through the digital sports program. Also, streamline all of our sales through our website, which is now live. That's MartinsvilleABC.com. The annual back-to-school fish fry, I'm not sure if you guys went to open house at the high school. We were outside selling, doing a fundraiser, selling fish as well as selling our merchandise. We got a lot of positive feedback from that. We hoping to continue that throughout the year, well, each year, and making it bigger and better each year. So, we'll see how that goes. Golf tournament, sponsorship opportunities. We also like to increase community engagement and volunteer participation. In this picture that you see, this was actually the fish fry that we did at the high school. Mayor Elsie did help us, helped us a little bit because we were kind of struggling with three, just three volunteers, so he did stuff in and help. Also, we are here to, for future vision, is advocate for a new gym athletics facility as well as create scholarship offerings. So, I'm gonna give it over to Stephanie just to give you an overview of some of our enhanced fundraising efforts.
Sure. So, the digital sports program, that will be generated both for fall, winter, and spring sports. That gives our sponsors another placement, so it sort of enhances our sponsorship program. For the sponsorship opportunities, we have a couple of those right now. We actually have some sponsors this year, so I'm really excited about that. Our sponsorship opportunities include the Big M Package, which is $300. This allows our sponsors to have a four-by-six-foot full-color banner that will be on the football field or in the basketball gym. It also includes placement in the digital program and announcements on the loudspeaker. They can also sign up, if they don't wanna have the package, they can also just do banner placement. So, that's $275 for the banner on the football field or $250 for placement in the gym. Or they can do a little combo and get a discount and do $500 for both. And as I've stated, we have some sponsors for this year, so we're really excited about that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Alright, so why your support matters? So, your support matter because it will enhance student experience, provide resources that the school often can't find, ensure all student athletes have the best possible experience. It also builds community, so encouraging a sense of pride and unity within the school and the community. Also supports educational goals, helps balance academics and athletics by reducing financial stress, and allowing athletes to focus on the student, or focus on their studies and their sports. And also sustains tradition. So, it also keeps the legacy and tradition of school sports alive, creating lasting memories for students and families. I know when I was in school a few years ago, we had an awesome Booster Club that sponsored a lot of our activities such as warmups, whether it was cheer stops, anything like that, as well as camps. So, we're hoping is to put that back into the school system to have the support for the student athletes. How can you help? So, volunteer at our concession stands or events. You can join our monthly meetings to share your ideas, which our meetings are usually held on the first of every, first Monday of every month, except, of course, when there's a holiday such as this month in September, it'll be September 16th. Donate to support our initiatives, encourage others to join and support the Athletics Booster Club as well. Alright, and thank you for your time. If you guys don't have any comments or questions for us, thank you for your time today. I'm sure this is not the last you'll see of us. We will be around trying to, you know, do a lot of fundraisers for the school. But if any questions arise later on, you can reach us, here's your contact information. We are on Facebook as well as Instagram, as well as you can submit an inquiry on our website. Again, that is MartinsvilleABC.com. And you can also purchase merch and also learn about some other opportunities on our website as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I want to say I really enjoy coming to the games and watching the core group work. We're working very hard behind the scenes that is in five, six-year plan to have a gym. And I believe that's still gonna happen. We talked about that some eight years ago. But I appreciate your efforts, so you guys get ready to do some work because we're gonna put the work in for the kids.
We're ready.
And our kids are deserving. They're deserving of it. Even when I talk to class, and we have another classroom reunion this weekend, those classes are talking about what they can do once we really get on the ground running with it. So, it's not a lost cause. I believe it's gonna happen. And we're gonna try to make it happen while we're here to enjoy it. And you weren't too long ago in school. And your mom and all of our crew members, I've had all of them. But thank y'all again and thank you. Y'all worked all the way there and you put in the hard work and we really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sergeant.
Appreciate it.
Alright, moving on to the information agenda. This month is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And Dr. World, you are gonna present to us.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to just talk to you for a moment about suicide prevention and awareness of murder. This is a time that we like to raise awareness of often stigmatized taboo topic that's often in the shadows, and we really need to bring it out in the open so we can shift the public perception, we can spread hope, and we can share vital information to those people who are affected by suicide. Our goal is to ensure that any individuals, friends, and families have access to the resources they need to discuss suicide prevention and seek help. Throughout the month of September, Martinsville City Schools will be making sure that any person experiencing suicidal thoughts or behaviors have a safe place to go and a number to talk to, someone to call, and a system that they can turn to to connect them to the support that they need. And while suicide prevention is important, talk about year-round, this month gives us the people in the field like Dr. Preston and myself time to come together with a collective passion and strength to discuss this difficult topic. Dr. Preston's gonna give you some more information.
Just to kind of piggyback on what Dr. World has said about suicide, I want to give you some vital statistics. Youth suicide is and has been for several years a significant concern in Virginia and across the nation. According to the CDC and Virginia Department of Health, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people ages 10 through 24. Since 2013, suicide rates have increased for adolescents between the ages of 10 and 24. Each year, approximately 8% of high school students attempt suicide and 3% make a suicide attempt that necessitates medical treatment. The number of children ages 5 through 17 who have been hospitalized for suicidal thoughts or behaviors have doubled in the last decade. As many as one in six high school students has considered suicide seriously. One in six. As many as additionally suicidal or suicide attempts by school staff or family members can have a significant effect on the safety and well-being of students at school. Over 75% of persons engaging in suicidal behaviors have engaged in behaviors that have warning signs that cause concern for their well-being. Therefore, it is critically important that school divisions have policies and procedures in place to prevent, assess the risk of, intervene with, and respond to youth suicidal behavior. Locally, we work with our community services board, which is Piedmont, to help families get the assistance with mental health that they need. Schools encourage families to utilize services through Piedmont as much as possible. At school, our school counselors and our school psychologists, and now even school nurses, are trained in mental health care for students. If they need someone to talk to during the day, those individuals are available. We also contact parents and attempt to get them the services they need before they ever leave school grounds. We can call PCS for crisis care at any time during the day. The health, safety, and well-being of our students, staff, and families are important. The more we know, the better that we can assist in these situations.
And I'll tell you, at the high school, they're doing some amazing things over there with suicide prevention this month. I believe Wednesday, they'll be going classroom to classroom, the school counselors, with the side of the suicide curriculum. They have a video that they show, they do a discussion. Their goal is to make sure that people know who to talk to when they come out of there, where to go, who to talk to. And they also have the TV, the medias out in the common areas that are doing mental health messages this month that kind of help. At the elementary level, it's a little softer of a topic, if you will. We're talking about how to identify feelings, how to, who to talk to if you need help, what's okay to say and not okay to say if you're not serious and things like that. So, it's a little more of a watered-down message there. And I would say at the division level, we're also doing our universal screening against here for mental health, which is a huge thing that very few divisions are doing. And we're doing great. And I also want to give a shout out to Dr. Tally too because as we think about the resiliency factors that make us all, when we're having low moods and things, you know, kind of knowing that you matter, knowing that you're important, knowing that you're valued, knowing that you're loved, and these are things that Dr. Tally says that all of our staff means. So, we want to start to celebrate that from the top down, the division is doing what it needs to look at for mental health. It was really apparent to Cliveview the other day, so I appreciate what you're saying there too. I also want to point out that 988 is the emergency mental health number. We don't have to call 911 anymore and have a SWAT team show up and have a crisis. We have a 988 mental health number so that anybody can call and subsdue or whatever and talk to someone. So, that's a great thing too. Let's see. Okay.
In the high school, they are also getting the posters from the National Behavior Health Association for 988 to hang in the schools so that students will know what numbers that they can call if they don't feel comfortable with talking with someone at school. And just to leave you with a couple of myths about suicide. One, suicide attempts or deaths happen without warning. The fact is that the survivors of a suicide often say that the intention was hidden from them. It was more likely that the intention was just not recognized.
People say and do things.
Yes. And then, another myth, every death is preventable. The fact is, no matter how well-intentioned, alert, and diligent people's efforts may be, there is no way of preventing all suicides from occurring. And that's just something that we want people to know. There are many myths surrounding suicide, but it is in fact a very serious topic. And we want our faculty, our staff, and our students to know that there is help available to them in school and out of school, that we are willing to give them the resources that they need in order to be safe and happy individuals.
And suicide would not be a permanent solution to a temporary problem, and just one conversation can save a life. So, let's all do our part and check on each other.
Where can we find those myths?
I can send them out. I sit on a Coalition for Suicide in the Community that Piedmont started, and they sent some of those out last week at the beginning of the month, which I thought was very, very important for people to know.
I'm very thankful for the council, you and Dr. World, Dr. Preston, Dr. Webber, because every time we have a crisis, our counselors come, our administrators come, our central staff come, and you guys are always there for days or weeks if needed. And that's what it's all about, you know, just coming together when you really need and if people have needs. So, I thank you. And I'm glad, as you said, what is it, 80% again, our counselors' time has to be spent with students. And I fully understand why because counselors end up doing scheduling and discipling and a lot of other stuff. Yeah, just somebody to talk to.
Mental health is so important.
So important.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all for all you did this year.
Oh, thank you. And you guys too. Thank you.
Alright, next, we have our first day of school overview by our principals. Who wants to go first?
Right, Dr. Ditchin, because they have college tonight.
Try to be peppy.
Who wants to be first? So, again, thank you to Dr. World and Dr. Preston for their efforts. Five minutes, five minutes, for the work that they're doing because you do see those signs and those posters around the school, reminding the students that you have someone you can talk to and you can call and talk to someone who's gonna support you. So, thank you for all those efforts. Opening back to school was tremendous. We had a great deal of students, I think I maybe even told Dr. Tally, students and parents who came, had a great deal of parents to come to our back-to-school night, opening house night, maybe even more than I've seen since, I guess, before COVID. So, we really had a great turnout. I think Booster shared the fundraising activity that people were excited about, but we had a great deal of freshmen that were there, parents, ninth-grade parents who pledged they're gonna get on board and they're gonna become a part of our Booster organizations and our support groups, and so it was just really, really good. Of course, Dr. Tally mentioned that today, we have our college night, so it's really exciting. We have representatives from all throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia and other places outside of the Commonwealth who are there sharing with students all kinds of wonderful opportunities, scholarships that are available, different majors that are available at the various institutions they represent, and so that's very exciting. So, I can't wait to get over there and see that. We've had various activities. Of course, August 28th, we had picture day, so that was very exciting. For whatever reason, this year, picture day was really exciting. And so, students wanted to take pictures before the pictures. But I said, "Whoa, but the phones were," you know, but it was good. Our athletic teams are off to a start this year. The young people are very, very, very much working diligently and they're working just tremendously to try to just be competitive. And so, I really want to take my hat off to the coaches and to the teams. We hadn't quite made the hump, but I believe that we're gonna make it over the hump. And they've certainly put in a lot of hard work over the summer break. September 30th, of course, September 30th hasn't come, but homecoming week. Students and parents and alumni often want to know, "When is homecoming?" Our students certainly ask us about it all the time because they want to know what kind of interesting activities we have for them. So, September 30th through October 4th is homecoming. We had August 24th SATs at MHS. I was pleased to find out how many students from Martinsville High School were actually there. It's open to anyone who goes on to the College Board and Register. But we had a great deal of, the majority of the kids that were there were actually our students, so that was good. So, those are some of the things that we have so far. It's been a great school year. We started out, and I don't know, I was maybe having a conversation with Dr. Tally and some other central office administrators and some of the building level administrators. We're just talking like, "It's scary good." So, it's just really, really good. I know I don't wanna, but it's been really, really good. So, we're just pleased and we're thankful for our families who've come out to entrust their students with us, so it's been great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Let's just go to the next school, how about the middle school?
We too had a wonderful start. You know, we don't know for certain the eyes and calmness, you know. Everything has been really well. Just to give you some numbers, because I know people in here like numbers. We, one thing we pride ourselves at, Martinsville Middle Schools as well as the high school and the elementary schools, is really getting students involved, you know, having bulldog pride and school pride to help them want to come to school and feel a sense of community. So, this year already with robotics is already running, we had over 57 applicants. But had to cut a few because we can only pick 36, but just seeing that grade increase, we had over 70 students, both male and female, come out for cheerleading. And that squad has been selected and they kept like four over 40. So, we look to have a huge squad for football and basketball. We've had, I think this year, we already have seven or eight people playing golf. We have a very, we have a full load for middle school volleyball. We've already had a couple games. They had a really nice turnout there as well. So, what we're seeing is we have a lot of students who want to get involved in things. That's really good. Same thing, open house, we had like over 300 people show up. So, a lot of involvement, attendance is looking good. Our enrollment is over the projection, and we're still getting new students every day. We got two new students today. So, soon I might have to hire another two. Also, we're, like I said, the students aren't just coming, but they're coming, they're participating, they're doing their work, they're following the expectations and procedures. Very minimal disruption. The mayor came by, he was like, "You didn't tell us." Dr. Tally's school board, it was so quiet, like, you know, the school was just so quiet and well-ordered and well-run. And that's not just Mr. Tools and Ms. Vernon and myself, but the teachers are really doing a good job setting those expectations. And then, attendance, we know as a division, we've been focused on attendance. We only have one attendance letter that we've had to send out so far for students who have missed one or five, a few that we're still keeping eyes on. But parents really working with us, some of the ones that were attendance issues last year already coming in saying, "Hey, okay, what can I do? What can we do to work together?" And they're really sticking to that plan. So, we look for a successful year too, because if they're in school, if they're participating, and they feel a sense of community, they're more likely to do well. And that's what we're claiming, and everybody's just really on a positive foot. We too have posted the suicide 988 and flyers and attendance flyers on the back of the stalls at all our bathrooms, so when you're in that quiet space and just thinking, they could see that, and students are sharing what they're hearing, and we're able to get in front of it and working as a team. So, we just look forward to other great things ahead. Any questions?
Ms. Cooper?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Patrick and Reese had a really great start to the year. Our enrollment too is up from where we ended last year, which is really nice. We have started the ground running with our new reading curriculum, implemented that, and working with teachers on building strong routines and procedures across, especially during reading, but that's rolling over to other subjects too, and it's having a really awesome benefit to how they're working in classroom, their time on task. And it's having a really awesome benefit to, um, how they're working in classroom, their, um, time on task in classrooms. That's been really awesome. Uh, we don't do as many, uh, after school clubs in the fall as we do in the spring, but our few after school clubs we do are currently, um, selecting students preparing for that. Uh, we sorted our new kindergarteners and new students into their houses on the third day of school. And so instantly started working on, um, creating and earning points. And so we constantly revisit back to our PBIS expectations for students to earn positive dojo points. And our kindergarteners have jumped right in and learned their chants very quickly and they're super excited about that. We'll start with house meetings next month and pulling out crazy costumes and things like that. But just really building that sense of community and, and building the bonds with our new students of, you know, which they really like. But, um, I've hired great teachers this year. Um, majority of them already came with ten plus years' experience and so that was very awesome. And, um, so it's just nice to have some really strong, dedicated people who are wanting to continue on the success we had from last year.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
I bought some notes because I'm getting old. But not old, some people on your past.
Uh, no, that's fine.
Our first day of school was great. Our first few weeks have been great. I think our kindergarteners have a new vibe. None of them cry, none of them wanted their mothers. They're like little grown people in little bodies this year. It's kind of different than what we've seen in the past. Um, they have adjusted well, our little kindergarteners, they are adjusting well. Um, our first day of school, um, we greeted our children, high fived both in the car ride line as well as the bus line. Um, our enrollment is catching up to what it was last year. We are continuously enrolling children daily and we have more on the docket. What we're doing, we're waiting on information from other schools to come so that we can enroll them properly. We've had students come from all over the United States. We've had some twins from Texas. We have some military families that has traveled throughout the United States and have come to our school. Our teachers as well as myself and our instructional staff, we are getting used to, um, the new ELA curriculum benchmark. And yours truly is trying to learn how to use data using chat GPT. And I had my lesson on how to utilize our data and I did put that in our newsletter because we asked other people to do things. I think the leaders should know how to do this well. And we are so happy to introduce our very new PBIS initiative. We are the Wildcat Kingdom. We have six prides, which are respectful, responsible, safe, solid, trustworthy, and creative. We've already had a kickoff, um, we had a good kickoff pep rally to introduce our prides and our children will be placed in our prides on Friday. Some of the activities that we've already, um, done at the Albert Harris is that we were proud to host the EL Night, uh, for the Monmouth City Public Schools and I thought that went very, very well. The food was great. Those hot dogs were a bomb and people were happy to attend. We had not only EL students attend, but we had any student that wanted to come to attend that meeting. Also, we have geared up with our robotics club because we want to win this year. So we were starting early with our robotics club, um, other clubs that are going to be starting up is, um, is our blind hands club. We introduced a new, um, Spanish language club so we can learn how to speak Spanish. And by popular demand, we are having our gospel choir come back this year as well. So we are thankful for this year. The teachers were happy to come back. Administrative staff was happy to come back. I think the students are very, very happy to come back. So we're hoping to have a successful school year. Um, the children are the reason why we're here. And at the Albert Harris Elementary School, we're excited about our new Wild Kingdom. So we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sheen? Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, our school year is off to a good start. Um, our first day of school, students came in, uh, ready to go. Parents actually were ready to let them go and, um, it was very few tears. We had some because for some it was a brand new experience. But overall, I think, um, they hit the ground running. Our teachers were ready and, and ready to greet our, our families. Um, most of our families actually dropped their child off in the car ride line, um, in the drop off section. We had a few that felt like they needed to walk them in, so, um, we took them from the foyer. It's as far as it goes. But, um, they were fine with that, had all the supplies. And I think our open house, because we do appointments, um, for our open house and have an opportunity to sit down and just chat with each family, to talk about the expectations for the year, talk about how our program operates and just some basic, um, housekeeping things, um, that we go over with our families. I think that really helps and then it gives the child an opportunity to meet both teachers and navigate around the classroom and get familiar with their cubby and kind of walk through the day a little bit. So all of that happens during our open house. So kind of on the first day of school, kids are very familiar. They know their teacher. They're looking for that face and, and teachers are out there looking for their kids. So it's not like, you know, we're trying to struggle and figure out who, who little Johnny is and which class he belongs to. So that really helps, um, and that starts things off in a good place. Um, uh, overall, you know, uh, this year was the first year that we've started the school year off with our very own resource officer. So that has been a major plus, um, safe, uh, traffic flow. Uh, we've come up with a different way of dismissal. We kind of mimic what, uh, Patrick Henry does with just calling dismissing one group at a time. And that has gone extremely well. So the habit has kind of set in and having that resource officer out there in place to hold the traffic. So that piece has gone extremely, uh, great. So we're excited about that. Um, we are almost full actually. We have about five, uh, four-year-old slots left, um, because we would like to maximize every slot that we can. So we do have a few applications that are still incomplete and we're working on getting all the documents in so that we can enroll those students. But overall, that piece of it has gone extremely well. And so I do want to say thank you to the central office staff and school board members, those that, um, and, and some of our other schools, our, our feeder schools have reached out and, and just kind of embraced us and we certainly thank you for that. Um, our jewel, um, we know she's still there. We're trying to get things back and, and it looks like today we're kind of getting there, you know. And we have such a strong team. Our team is a family. And they have supported each other and they have stood with each other. And, you know, we've cried, we've laughed, we're gonna get through it. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Sounds like everything started smoothly.
It's been a great opening and, uh, again, uh, TJ and I talked probably for the fifth and second of the year. I've just been very quiet and, and again, I give it to our administrators and teachers for the preparation. Cause it doesn't just happen. You have to prepare and plan and all of you've done a great job. And we appreciate what you do for our babies.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, we've had an opportunity to look over the minutes from the August thirty-first, period of ending August thirty-first, as well as the financial report. May I have a motion to approve both of those items? And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the action agenda. You've had the opportunity to pick up your elementary school version, as well as your high school, middle school version, of the student expectation handbooks. And I'm sure that you've had an opportunity to peruse those and look through them. Um, I need a motion to accept those as printed?
I so moved.
I see. All right, any discussion? Anybody see anything they'd like to comment on or? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
We do need to, as a board, um, elect our governor's school board representative for, uh, the school board. As you all know, we have four school systems that comprise our governor's school. And that is Pennsylvania County, Danville City, Martinsville City, and Henry County. One of the school board members from each, uh, vicinity does sit on the board and make up that board. And then they also elect a chairman and a co-chairman. Um, we discussed that whether, who would like to do that or have a, any, any volunteers? You're like, we're looking at one. All right. I will be more than happy to do that again. They, they love me. They might love me. Okay, I will do that again. I would like to suggest we do have, in case of an emergency, a fill-in. If I cannot go, these meetings are, uh, once, well, like six times a year, not, it's not every quarter. But we do meet and we meet at two-thirty. It varies from whether it's at P and H or if we have to go to Danville. Would anybody like to be that? Or Ms. Carter, would you like to, or would you like to?
I would like to.
You'd like to?
Uh, I'd say that Ms. Carter.
Ms. Carter, would you willing, if you want to be the alternate? Mr.? Do you, do you feel the voluntold thing going on?
Yeah, voluntold.
Yes.
That was, that was Mike.
That was Mr. Williams.
See, I'm innocent this time, but I will be guilty next time.
Okay, all right. So I will be our rep and then Kathy will be our alternate.
Sounds good.
All right. Uh, we need to have, um, representative and an alternate for the delegate assembly. At our, pardon, we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the motion before us is that I will serve as the representative to governor's school and Ms. Carter the alternate. May I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry. We need to choose, uh, somebody to be our delegate for the Virginia School Board Association Delegate Assembly that is in November. Uh, and we also need an alternate in case someone is not able to attend the meeting. Who would like to volunteer? Well, you know, process of elimination says I would like to volunteer one of you and the other can be the alternate since you all volunteered Ms. Carter herself.
I will be the alternate.
No, I was looking at alternate.
I'm pulling my.
Yes, Lord love a duck. Okay. So the motion is Ms. Blackwell will be our representative and Mr. Williamson will be our alternate. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, rolling on along. We need to select two folks to be on our budget committee meetings. We will meet with Dr. Tally, Dr. Downing, Dr. Tarpley, Mr. Clemmons, and whatever other cabinet at various times as they put the budget together. And then you all will have input and commentary and you will bring it back to the school board and discuss it with us. Do I have any volunteers for that?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. All right, and we need a second person as well. Okay, and?
We put that schedule out for you if, uh, and the cabinet adopted it. So if you guys will look at those things, we'll try to hold firm, but if anything happens, just let us know. We can be flexible at times.
Okay, so the motion before us is that Kathy and Nikia will both be on that budget committee. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Student school board representative. We've not been fortunate enough to have anybody since COVID. So I'm hoping that we're gonna have somebody now. Mr. Summendons waving a little piece of paper at me. And, and Dr. Brown said that I was aging, so I can't see her.
She was actually talking about me. I'm the oldest. She was talking about me. She was actually talking about me.
We all, we actually all resemble it. Yes, sir. How are you?
Good evening, board.
Good evening, sir.
Vice chairperson, number one, um, Ad Ag, Logic Dixon will be the representative.
Okay. And Anne is our senior, is that correct?
Elijah's junior.
Okay.
And the alternate will be Josiah Plunkett.
Okay.
Very good students.
Okay, and I assume Mr. Dixon is a junior or is he a senior as well? Should be a junior, okay. I was just checking. I couldn't remember. I like that way and he, I hope he knows that I'm, is he a senior?
All of them are seniors.
Those seniors.
Josiah is, yes.
All of them are seniors.
I thought we had a junior and a senior. We used to have that.
We need to, yeah, if, I think it's great that they're off, but we need to have a junior and a senior. So next year we can get back in that rotation if possible.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what is our pleasure? Do we want to just keep both seniors this year and have them join us at the next meeting or what do you suggest?
Can you add one junior instead of four or seven, three?
Well, the one is an alternate. We usually only have two, but I guess we could do three.
It's a pleasure, board. It's what a board wants.
Folks? Okay, then if you'll locate us a junior to join us, just so we have a rotation for next year.
We'll be done.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
We gotta vote on it.
Uh, we do need to vote on it? Okay. Uh, the motion's before us to accept Ms. Ag and Mr. Dixon as our representatives for the school board representative and our alternate being Mr. Plunkett. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll add the junior whenever the name is brought forth.
Thank you. Uh, I want to thank all the, the administrators for opening up our school. But again, it's been a very smooth process so far. Uh, and we're involved in a lot of things from AI to some of the different changes of testing that will take place this year, uh, which will be very different. Um, I want to thank all the schools for opening our doors, cabinet, and travel. Uh, and still in the process, I think we got two more schools to go up. Just talking to each faculty. Uh, we'd like to go there every year and talk to each staff personally, um, at the beginning of the year. Uh, I want to thank the schools for entertaining us and, um, the faculty and owners for being so warm. And, and we're looking for just a smooth year this year. Uh, Travis and I also went to city council to advocate for the matching fund money act. I want to say thank you to city council for graciously giving us, uh, the balance of what we needed. Uh, all school divisions, to my knowledge, uh, tried to stay ahead to do this in order to get that matching funds. And so I want to thank the cabinet for helping us with the logistics and Mr. Clemmons for going with us. Uh, and I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor and the city council for, uh, just finding support. First day of school was wonderful. I only saw one child cry, including, if I may have cried. At the left, I was amazed this year. I saw no parents cry. They couldn't do it. And that's always amazing to me because it's usually the parents when I was at Patrick Henry. And so I may have missed it. I only saw one, one young man cry. Uh, but it was, it was very, accused of very impressive marching in like soldiers and, and ready to go. And the, the staff was so warm at all the schools. I want to thank the city officials too, especially city manager who wrote me, uh, all day to, to go to each school and greet at each school that we went to and her assistant. And, uh, also law enforcement and firemen and, and, uh, just a, a plethora of people as well as board members. I want to thank you for that. Um, we are excited by expansion, uh, on the board at the Virginia Museum of Natural History. Uh, they're getting ready to expand. It's really exciting. Uh, some of the building projects that they're about to, uh, build, the school will be connected to it and they will be able to offer us some very interesting, uh, programs. Uh, and so as you know, our museum, people say it's a local museum, but actually it's a state, uh, it's a state museum. So we're real fortunate to have them. And, uh, I wanted to thank them, uh, for their hard work and making us a, a part of that. Uh, student attendance will of course be, uh, focused, uh, on Thursday. Uh, all of our administrators, two of them have already turned us in. Uh, we're locating all the students that we're missing because we've had a tremendous amount of students throughout the state that are in transit. Uh, we're locating all the students that we're missing because we had a tremendous amount of students throughout the state that are in transit. And I want to thank those principals. We've already done that work. We will be seeking those students and we'll say to the parents, don't forget that, uh, if you're an eighteen year old, especially, education in Virginia is compulsory. You have to attend schools, not an option. And, uh, you have to be registered. I also want to thank, uh, our people and student services who are working with our students. Uh, who are homeless. We also have quite a few of those. And we're also working to give those people, because they are part of our family, to, uh, extend its support. Uh, I want to say thank you to, uh, a band and the band students, a celebration of life that we had with Derek recently. They came out. Uh, staff members who also came, even retired teachers who came. And to Derek's mom and her family, we also, uh, extend our prayers. Uh, very thankful for the ELL carnival that came. Uh, the one last is just, I think, we had several administrators there, even it was hosted at Abbott Harris. It's just very nice. Uh, all kinds of food, uh, and all kinds of festivities. I thought it was just very nice. And we appreciate your hosting of that again. Uh, PBIS, uh, meeting and, uh, it's sort of like the PF, BIS meetings are very valuable for us. It is those meetings that tell us how many discipline fractions we have, where those events are taking place, what time of day those things are happening. And then school division, uh, schools are able to sit and strategize on how to come up with resources to, to better pound attendance and discipline. So I want to thank Dr. Tammy Bond for that. Uh, again, we are very appreciative of all the new programs that we have going. We can't have revise at, at the high school. We do have, uh, staff numbers there. We're excited about that. I want to mention just briefly, uh, CTE program, which, uh, is now doing so well that we're actually getting so many inquiries into from other divisions on, on what they're doing. I don't know how she keeps up with what all we're doing, but they will have special program, uh, this Tuesday coming up, September seventeenth. It's called the CTE Career Discovery, uh, Quest. And from that program, it's going to take place on September seventeenth from ten AM to one PM in Uptown Martin Luther. Uh, it's going to introduce our middle school students to a diverse range of career opportunities. So it will, uh, give them on-hand experiences. It will showcase our, our businesses, uh, and I hope to, you know, inspire students to start their own. And, and I wanted to say, uh, divisions all across the state are looking for opportunities to start student businesses. And we have students lead businesses. And if you visit our buildings, you'll see the students actually doing the work, uh, doing the management, handling the, the finances. They, they do it all. And it's just, it's phenomenal. Uh, it's a phenomenal experience. And we wanted to view school divisions to have it. I don't know of any other DSH.
There are a few, but we just haven't recognized them.
Not many. I believe one thirty-three, not many at all in the state to have that. So we're very proud of what's going on, the growth, uh, that's going on there. If anyone needs any more information, you can see Ms. Heinz and, uh, talk to her about what's going on. But to get a chance to go uptown and see our students in action up there on September seventeen, please go by. If you can just drive through, they'd be glad to have you up. Okay, I thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the board. Do you have anything, Ms. Blackwell, for them? Ms. Carter, would you like to share anything? I guess not. Mr. Williamson?
I just want to thank all the teachers and the staff for the great job you're doing so far. Uh, it seems that everything is jumping off to a good, great start. And, uh, I just want to say thank you.
Um. I had, I had you on mute, Ms. Givens.
That's okay.
I had you, I had you on mute.
You had you on mute, okay. Do you have something you would like to add, Ms. Carter?
Uh, everything is sounding great and, uh, looking forward to personally visiting, um, the, the different schools in the division.
Okay. All right. Um, my first comment is to say, I always, I've always said that Marksville City Schools is a family. And that was very obvious last Thursday. Um, my heart broke for the Fairview family. Unfortunately, I know what it's like to work in some place and have that because we have that happen at the junior high many times over the years. It's hard. Their professionalism was amazing. I appreciate the cabinet being over there. I saw everybody there early in the morning. And the love and the hugs and Sheila's right, there was some little laughter, there were smiles. It's, it's a family. And that's what makes our school system different from the others that I've visited over the last thirty-four years of teaching. And I'm just very proud to be a part of it and thank you for all you do, what all, everyone does. There's no, no one's job that's more important than anyone else's and we appreciate all you do. So thank you very much. Uh, reminder of dates. September seventeenth, we have a governor's school meeting. I believe that's at P and H this time. Uh, October eleventh is a student holiday, teacher work day. And October fourteenth is our next scheduled school board meeting. Any unregistered citizen comments? All right. Communications, we do have one. I'll share with you all. Pass this down, Dr. Tally.
Thank you.
All right. Otherwise, we're going to go into closed session. Mr. Williamson, since you've got your glasses on, she likes it. She likes her ears flying.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, right here, pursuing.
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of evaluation, employment, assignment, and reassignment of employees of the Montville City Schools as authorized by the, by section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information.
Okay, that's, I still move.
I second.
Second?
I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to do roll calls since she's on? Person, okay. All right. Thank you. Have a nice evening.